I'd like to call to order the monthly and advertised state meeting of the lower Warren County Board of Commissioners, December fourteenth, twenty twenty one. Please rise for pleasure. We have the Honorable Judge Leo with us today. Judge Leo, would you perform the duties entrusted to you today?
Yeah.
Want to step up here?
Okay.
Anyone want to hold what other buckle for you?
Can we move on?
Absolutely.
Read. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And then I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
That I have not paid or contributed.
That I have not paid or contributed.
Or promised to pay.
Or promised to pay.
Or contribute.
Or contribute.
Either directly or indirectly.
Either directly or indirectly.
Any money.
Any money.
Or other valuable thing.
Or other valuable thing.
To procure my election.
To procure my election.
Except for necessary.
Except for necessary.
Proper.
Proper.
Expenses.
Expenses.
Expressly authorized by law.
Expressly authorized by law.
And that I have not knowingly.
And that I have not knowingly.
Violated any election law.
Violated any election law.
Of the Commonwealth.
Of the Commonwealth.
Or procured.
Or procured.
It to be done.
It to be done.
By others.
By others.
On my behalf.
On my behalf.
And then I will not knowingly receive.
And I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money.
Any money.
Or other valuable thing.
Or other valuable thing.
For the performance or nonperformance.
For the performance or nonperformance.
Of any act.
Of any act.
Or duty.
Or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation, the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God. Yes.
Thank you, Judge Leo. My pleasure, folks. Thank you. Everyone have a very, very Christmas, happy New Year, happy Hanukkah, whatever you may celebrate. And hope next year is a great year for everybody. We could use it, huh? Next, if I could ask the Blumhardt family, please come forward and join Commissioner Blumhardt in the front.
Everybody's solving the pain.
Sorry. So this is Commissioner Blumhardt's last meeting after eight years of dedicated service to this township, unwavering and totally committed to everything we've done. So I want to, I'm going to begin a standing ovation here perhaps, so thank you. I'm going to come down for a photo op. We have a nice little gift for Commissioner Blumhardt. I'm going to pull up the references.
Oh, look at that. That was a long time coming.
And the other ones involved.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay.
All right, everybody. Thank you. One, two, three. She even has how many members? So my bonded public office all started with running on an issue, running on preserving open space, which is now Fairway Farm. And from there became Valley Center Park through collaboration with the school district. And from there we got Walla and other pedestrian connections. It used to drive me crazy to see kids walking down Redline Road in the middle of the road because there was no pedestrian crossing over the Huntington Valley Creek. So we had that crossing now by the Easy Storage that Gavin uses almost every day to go to Mary Avenue. And I'll never forget meeting, asking Tom Mer to meet me out there back in 2010. And I said, is there something we could do to expand this bridge? And he kind of like, you know, he knew I was ambitious. And he let me down gently saying, you know, this is probably small potatoes on Penn Doc list. And fast forward to 2021 and we have this, this bridge connection that's, that's in place. And it was a, it was a Penn Doc grant, I think, about a 1.5 million dollar project. So I'm happy about that. And I just want to say I've always led by leading like the greater good always led my decision. Very like strong about that. I think everybody here knows that about me. And hopefully I've led by example and inspired some people to grab a clipboard and put their, their petition out and get people to sign it, run for office. You know, they want to be the change, they want to see. So it was a great run. So I'm very happy and I just want to thank you. Well, I feel like the leadership is much kinder and gentler than when I started. So thank you for that. That's all I have to say. It was a great run and an honor and a privilege to serve the township. Thanks.
A public participation on agendas will be taken after each item is discussed. Now the Chair recognizes Commissioner Currents, Chair of the Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Chairman. The first item on my agenda is a public hearing and it's BT Philmont LP. It's three zero zero one Philmont Avenue and it's a zoning amendment number twenty one dash oh three. So tonight the applicant is with us and they will be reviewing the zoning text amendment. That is in front of us and Solicitor Rice is going to explain the procedure of the hearing process and what's before us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Currents. You struggle with a little bit of scratching voice. So I don't think it it's hard to believe a lawyer is not going to say much. I'll try to keep it brief because this has been front of the board previously. It's been front of the City Commission. What's on the docket tonight is a proposed zoning amendment. A piece of legislation under the municipality's planning code that has to be advertised. It's been advertised twice in the newspaper or public hearing tonight. What's in front of the board is to review the proposed zoning amendment, which would permit the construction of a project which is being called Philmont Flats, which are apartments on one of the stretch sites in the town to appear Pine Road and Philmont. The first step, if the board approves this, next step is the ordinance to require conditional new sharing, which is more of a quasi judicial type of proceeding. This is a legislative proceeding and it would also be a land development plan where the fine details would be worked out and, and reviewed. But none of that moves forward unless the board approves the zoning amendment, zoning amendment, which has been advertised for tonight. So with that, one of the councils here for the applicant, turn it over to her and she can explain what is being done.
Thank you very much for that introduction, Mr. Rice. Julie Bonds Breckelson, on behalf of BT Philmont LP. Joining me this evening are Michael Markman, President of BET Investments, Inc., and Peter Cullen, Vice President of Development of BET Investments, Inc. So BT Philmont is requesting adoption of the proposed text amendment to zoning ordinance section two oh eight four oh four E six, which is the multimodal development use permitted by conditional use in the OTOD Transit Oriented Development Overlay District. I want to start out by noting that the proposed text amendment is not a complete rewrite of the multimodal development use, but rather it allows for adjustments to the existing provisions to enable development of this use for reasons that I discussed way back early in this process, back in the summertime when BT originally submitted the text amendment to the township. So just to provide a little bit of background again to re-familiarize everybody with this process and why BT is going down the road of requesting this text amendment. BT Philmont acquired the property located at three thousand one, three thousand forty one and three thousand fifty one Philmont Avenue near the intersection of Thomason Road back in 2014. And right around this time is when the township revised its zoning ordinance, adopted a new zoning ordinance and made changes to the REV district and also created the transit oriented overlay development overlay district in which districts BT's properties are located. So from 2014 to 2016, BT Philmont diligently and aggressively marketed the property and tried to develop it for allowable uses in the REV and TOD district, but was unable to garner any interest, thus leaving vacant buildings on the property. So by 2016, BT Philmont redirected and decided to demolish the existing buildings and then pursue tax changes to the zoning ordinance, in particular to the TOD district, to create what we now know as the multimodal development, which includes multifamily and minor retail uses and which also included a parking garage component to facilitate the redevelopment of the Philmont train station by SEPTA. So after the adoption of the text amendment, creating the multimodal development in 2017, unfortunately, SEPTA decided not to pursue the redevelopment of the Philmont train station. Thus, a very major component of the multimodal development was now eliminated. And additionally, the retail component of the multimodal use was speculative at best, and it was largely dependent on the redevelopment of the Philmont train station. But even after losing this major component of the multimodal development, BT still continued to diligently market the property for such use. However, BT, who has leased over 900,000 square feet of retail space and commercial space within the Philadelphia suburban area, was unable to secure any interest for retail use at this property. And that was in large part due to the last four years of the changing retail market. The market has changed dramatically over these last four years and the evolving commercial trends just made the multimodal development unachievable, which frustrated then the purpose of the TOD district. But in an effort to make the multimodal development achievable, BT then submitted the text amendment in the summertime to the township and seeking just some changes to the multimodal development provisions, along with the sketch plan, which showed a concept of what the multimodal development could look like if the text amendment was adopted. And to aid in that review of the proposed text amendment, a physical impact study was also provided. That was prepared by Land Planner David Babbitt. And so the proposed text amendment and sketch plan were reviewed by the township staff, the township consultants, the planning commission and this board. And after receiving comments, suggested changes to the sketch plan, including density reduction, a parking garage addition, enhanced green area, open space, community connections, BT Philmont revised its sketch plan to incorporate all of these changes. And when it was resubmitted and the sketch plan was resubmitted, it was much well, it was just better received, I would say. And the text amendment was revised accordingly. So we reviewed the revised text amendment with the Township Planning Commission at their meeting in October. And after review, the planning commission recommended approval of the text amendment. And we also received Montgomery County Planning Commission's review letter dated December second, which also supports the proposed text amendment. So again, to stress, the text amendment again is only to the multimodal development. And the amendments are based in part on a land planning concept called smart growth. And what that is, that's authorized by the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, specifically section six oh three C six, which states that zoning ordinances may contain provisions allowing increases in the permissible density of population or intensity of a particular use based on express standards set forth in the zoning ordinance. So this smart growth concept is heavily endorsed by county planning commissions in particular because it allows for a higher density development if environmental and other civic benefits are incorporated in the design and development of the use. And that includes transportation improvements, green buildings, structured parking, enhanced design, recreation improvements, stormwater management facilities. So in other words, the higher density offsets the cost of those improvements, which is what, what is meant by the planning concept of smart growth. And here in particular, it provides a mechanism to achieve the township's objectives for the revitalization of the Philmont Avenue corridor, which includes traffic improvements, community connections and much needed stormwater management controls. So turning to the actual text amendment provisions, the existing ordinance permits a density bonus of three units per acre if certain transportation improvements are made to area roadways. What the text amendment does is it modifies that provision to allow the same density bonus if the developer if the developer provides a fee in lieu of the installation of the transportation improvements for instances where the installation of transportation improvements already contemplated to be constructed. As the township traffic engineer stated in his review letter, the traffic to be generated from the proposed apartment development of three thousand one Philmont Avenue was already factored in the proposed roundabout design. Thus, developers should provide a financial contribution to the roundabout project. This text amendment achieves that goal. The existing ordinance also permits a density bonus of five units per acre if land is set aside to guarantee the construction of the SEPTA parking garage. We already know that that is not, no longer achievable, so that particular density bonus cannot be utilized. So as an alternative, the text amendment allows for a density bonus of 10 units per acre where a residential parking garage is provided in lieu of surface parking and which results in a 25% reduction from the maximum allowable lot coverage and where electric charging stations are installed onsite and solar energy is incorporated into the garage design and construction. These are all extremely important, significant environmental benefits which furthers the concept of smart growth and also achieves the township's objectives for the revitalization of the Philmont Avenue corridor. And along those lines, the text amendment also allows a density bonus of five units per acre, provided the proposed stormwater system assumes that the site is 40% meadow condition and stormwater improvements consisting of stream restoration, basin construction and green rooftops are made either on or off site within the Huntington Valley Creek watershed or a fee in lieu of these improvements is provided. Same smart growth concept as previously described, allows an increase in density, but enables implementation of very needed environmental benefits that are significant costs and which would not otherwise be achievable. So as it exists today, with density bonuses factored in, a multimodal development allows 20 units per acre if the property has 10 acres or less. The proposed text amendment allows with density bonuses 30 units per acre if the property has 10 acres or less. But it also has the significant and very much needed infrastructure and environmental benefits that will be provided to the community, achieving the township objectives for the Philmont Avenue corridor and the intent of the TOD district. Lastly, the text amendment allows a multimodal development to calculate the gross floor area percentage requirements by including the building gross floor areas of the uses on land in the TOD overlay up to 1,400 square feet from the property's boundaries provided, 3,000 square feet of retail area is provided. That is consistent with the intent of the TOD overlay to encourage overall redevelopment of the land within the TOD for a variety of uses, including high density residential uses. Again, the zoning ordinance text amendment, supported by the Township Planning Commission, Township Consultants and the County Planning Commission. And with that brief overview, I am going to turn it over to Michael Markman to just provide a concept of what type of development could be achieved if the text amendment is adopted.
My name is Michael Markman. I'm the president of BET Investments. Our property. So we'll just go through, this is a very similar package to what we've presented before multiple occasions. So it's, we're calling Philmont Flats. This is a picture of five 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 flats in Worsham. So this is the current site. It previously had Freddie Auto Dealers and had warehouses in the back. I think at one time it was actually the headquarters for Ask One many, many years ago. We've torn down all the buildings and now it's, it's basically a flat site at the corner of Thomason and Philmont Avenue. This is the current condition of the site as we've demolished all the buildings. Mostly paved with some green growing through. This is what it looks like on Thomason Road and kind of the surrounding properties that exist there today. This is the other way on Thomason Road, some of the surrounding properties. Philmont Avenue East and West, what it currently looks like. This is currently Season's Pizza, which is right next door, which is actually very attractive. This is a drawing of the plan that we proposed. As you can see, it has a very large courtyard, very similar to the five 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 flats, which is the first slide. Off of Thomason, it's got a meandering entranceway that feeds into a garage. The, the parking garage will service the residents and any guests of the residents. And then it has a small parking lot on the side and access out to Philmont Avenue that will service the 3,000 square foot retail space. This is kind of an overall like 30,000 feet aerial of the site, just to show that based on us developing under the current ordinance, we've created a lot of green space. Currently, it's mostly paved. And if you can see the parking garage, what it allows you to do is really condense your footprint so you're not sprawled out on the whole site. You condense the parking to a two level parking garage next to the building and that gives you more green space. And that was kind of the incentive of building the garage, which was requested. This showing the parking garage as it's laid out. It also shows potential solar panels, which we've explored on the second floor of the garage, which will serve as the roof for the second floor of the garage. This solar, this solar array similar to this on the second floor should probably provide 30 to 40% of all the energy required for the building. This, we, we were asked to, to basically look at Philmont Avenue and making it more of a walkway and adding different features to make it more interesting, more connected and more inviting for people to walk along. So one of the things we were asked to do, which we did, is we pulled the building back further away from Philmont Avenue. We added more green space. We have a meandering path and then we'll have some seating areas that will then tie into the retail space as well and hopefully all the other retail on Philmont. This is showing the retail space. It's 3,000 square feet in the corner. As you can see, it's pretty much self parked. And we're committed to doing that retail space out on Philmont Avenue. So one of the other things we did, currently there's a stream that goes through the property. We basically enhanced and consolidated the green areas on the site. And then we were looking at doing an open channel stream restoration so that it's more environmentally friendly. It looks better. It's more aesthetically pleasing. And then basically a trail connection from Philmont to the train station going through the property. So this is kind of hard to see, but it's, it's getting into, I know this is a big issue obviously in lowermoreland is the school, school children statistics. So initially we came in and we looked at the general number of schoolchildren in these types of projects. And we specifically looked at the number of schoolchildren we, we have in our specific projects. And you can kind of see the ratios, West End Flats in media, we have five, 50 a grand a run, we have 16. Promenade in Upper Dublin, we have 25. But these ratios are actually all lower and there's less schoolkids in all our other projects, our four other projects shown on here than you currently have at Carson Terrace, which is formerly known as Huntington Place. So the ratio there, if you look at the two bedrooms, because we're finding that all the schoolkids are in the two bedrooms, is a point two five ratio. Based on our statistics and what we see at our other apartment projects, we have much less than a point two five ratio. But to make it consistent with the other property in lowermoreland that has been developed and it shows you how many schoolkids are in that property, which is mostly two bedrooms, we use the point two five ratio. And with the point two five ratio, if you look at it, we also came back and we're coming back tonight and saying that we will limit the two bedroom units to 98 two bedroom units. And it's something we're willing to live with. What happens is we don't have any schoolkids or one bedroom units. We have a rule that you can only have two residents per bedroom in any apartment. So unless you're a single parent and you're okay with your kid living in the living room or in the bedroom with you, you're generally not going to have a school child there. So every school child we have in these apartment projects lives in a two bedroom unit. Because a one bedroom is just not conducive for that type of living. So we took the point two five and we, we looked at that against the 98 two bedroom units that we're saying we're going to limit it to the two bedroom units and that would produce 25 schoolchildren on the site. The next slide basically shows that what is the break even for the school district? If you look at what it costs to educate a child in lowermoreland and you look at how many kids would it take for the taxes to break even, you would have to get up to 55 schoolchildren. Under the 98 two bedroom units, under the Carson Terrace ratio, we will have 25 schoolchildren. We would have to have 30 more to be able to basically eat up all the taxes produced by this project. If in fact, we have the 25 schoolkids, which are the similar amount of schoolkids to Carson Terrace, this project will produce $660,825 accretive to the schools. So if you subtract out what it costs to educate those 25 children and then you take the taxes we would pay to the school district, it's accretive to the school district to the tune of basically $661,000 extra that they'd be able to use on education. Now it did actually is consistent with some of our other projects. The school district will have a lot more. If it's consistent with Carson Terrace, it'll produce an extra 661,000 for the school district to use to educate children. This is just showing the, the roundabout that's been planned and worked during, I mean, your, your, your commissioners and Commissioner Blumhardt that work really, really hard to be able to fund this roundabout. So what's going on is since it's funded between the township and the state, instead of us, you know, the, the traffic improvements are being already funded. So we have a provision that's going to allow us to contribute to the roundabout, which has been funded and reimburse the township for some of the investment they've already made in the planning. And then here's just some exterior examples. This is our, our similar project in Worsham. This project was built at least up in eight months and it's 256 units. Next slide. Kind of shows, so, so these projects we build are almost like resorts. You walk in, you feel like you're at a resort hotel and that's part of the appeal. It's just light and airy with high ceilings, you know, well designed indoor, outdoor amenity spaces. We have doors that roll up, we have fire pits, we have waterfalls, we have pools. So basically when you, when you walk into this environment, you know, what a lot of residents tell us, they feel like they're on vacation when they come home. This is the gym. We have a fitness center in each one. This is kind of one of our standard units, stainless steel appliances, quartz countertops, kind of luxury features. Next one. Is that it? Okay. So I guess that, that's our presentation. We've made most of it before besides the production in two bedroom units. So if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
So how many total units are you talking about?
So on this schedule, it says two-twenty-five. It will be no more than ninety-eight two-bedroom units.
So on our previous conversation, you know, one of the big things, man, is getting down to number two thousand. I heard that there may be a little bit of a limit to the number of units also. I know we're just getting to two hundred, but I think reduction, yes.
Yeah, we've thought about it and have had a lot of requests for that, and we can, we can go down to the two-twenty. But that's kind of where it kind of falls off, but ninety-eight, so that essentially would be ninety-eight two-bedroom units, and then you're talking about a hundred and twenty-two. Two bedrooms, yeah. Yes. No more than ninety-eight twos, and we could limit the upper limit to two-twenty, if you're inclined to pass this.
Mr. Markman, I have a question.
Sure.
Just for, actually, the public, I am understanding that this zoning text amendment, really what you're talking about here. I understand, because I saw the five-five-five flats, and I am understanding that's really what you're you're proposing to build this, but the text amendment, it doesn't really, you could, we could pass this, but it doesn't really mean you're going to build this. Are you willing to commit that the plan you're presenting tonight represents, you know, a concept of this plan and wanting to, you know, commit that the sketch will actually be in coordination or could be actually an exhibit to the zoning text amendment, would be willing to do, you know?
I'm looking at my attorney, whether, I mean, I can tell you right now, so if you speak to any townships, we build these.
That, that's possible.
Denise, is your question essentially that will eventually, if this gets to the land development phase, will that?
Something like that could be done now, but, you know, we're hearing, you know, we saw the updated sketch and and something like that, you know, we're looking at that now, and if that, that, that's what we're looking at, and it's promising. And we want to make sure that something like that, you know, comes to fruition.
Right. Let me ask Mr. Markman a question. Mr. Markman, you know, this passes, you have to present a conditional use application and the plan.
Yes, sir.
You know, and that'll be a more quasi-judicial proceeding, plus for testimony. During the conditional use proceeding, is this the plan you intend to present?
That's, that is our intention. So what's got to happen?
More detail.
You have more detail. So it has to be engineered, and barring any issues that come up with the engineering, so, but I think we've built in, you know, four townships in the region recently. And I can tell you that we're not presenting things that, you know, we're not giving. And I think our reputation to build what we represent has been consistent. But so I stand before you saying that we are going to build a project that's consistent with what we're showing you. There may be some tweaks here or there based on technical items, but that is our intention to build a project, assisting with what we showed.
During the conditional use here, you would agree on the record, it would be ninety-eight one-bedrooms.
Yes, sir.
That would be a condition.
Two bedrooms. Ninety-eight two bedrooms. Yeah, there's more one bedroom, but ninety-eight two bedrooms. So I'm, I'm. I mean, we've been here for six, you know, seven, eight years, you know, with this project.
But they're all conditions that you would have no problem with.
Yes, sir.
So that's really where the details are right there. Build it out.
Yes.
And the condition would be attached, that's.
Yes.
Well, the, you know, the public, you know, this is a huge change, and we know a lot more, and this, it's, it's, it's a nice, you know, these are great features. And we want to, you know, there's a lot of vagueness in the, in the text amendment, and we want to make sure that something like this is really carried through. So.
I mean, the basic components, you know, the problem with.
This is beautiful.
Problem with the catch that is a condition is that's not the way it's part of something.
Exactly. That's, that's, that's what I'm trying to.
It's a representation, but, you know, we have Mr. Markman and his counsel here agreeing that that's what will be presented if the conditional use proceeding. So if Mr. Markman comes in two months from now.
I have your word.
Well, but if I come in and I present something that's completely inconsistent with this, it's a judiciary, you're, you know, I fully expect you to say, no, we can't approve something that's not consistent with what you've already shown us.
So he doesn't want to have a plan tonight and spend the next six years.
Seven years.
In the next six years over him reneging on something that he has, you know, basically said the, that, so there's some element of trust, but, you know, I think the risk that something will change substantially is really, really small. I mean, it's, you know, that's why the conditional use is there. That's the check on what you're being told now versus what actually is going to come from the door, you know, with the fully engineered plan.
And if I could just add, so we toured pretty much all the commissioners through five-five-five flats. I volunteered to take anyone who wanted to go through there. Some of the commissioners and Mr. Hoffman then went through Promenade at Upper Dublin, which I would say is even at some levels a step up as far as the finishes to the apartments from five-five-five flats. So with my partner is Bristol, he's really focused on the luxury kind of environment, and I am as well. And that's how we get the rents we get. If we, if we built something that was subpar, we would not get the rent level. And honestly, the concessions I made here are probably for the extra units. So right now, it's probably permitted to do about a hundred and sixty-three units. So, you know, to get an extra unit, there's ten to twelve million dollars in concessions here as far as the garage, the green space, the solar panels. There's just, the interesting part is your staff has asked all the, we're in a lot of townships, and they've asked all the right questions, and they've had, you know, kind of pushed us to the limits of doing the right thing as far as green space, as far as, you know, reducing the solar footprint, as far as multimodal and having this kind of, I mean, if this is built this way, this will be an award-winning project right next to the train station. It'll be the top multimodal green project, you know, in the region. And I think your staff has challenged us, and, you know, we've agreed to it because we think that it's the right way to go, so.
I'm going to believe, yeah.
I just want to add to Commissioner Firth's saying that we don't doubt your integrity, sir. We just are worried about passing a somewhat nebulous text amendment in that, in B of L, doesn't define any, you know, all those things are not well-defined. And this does give you the opportunity, and obviously it wouldn't happen in conditions, but does give you the opportunity to develop to two-hundred-and-forty.
Yeah. So, I mean, tonight I'm committing to two-twenty. I'll drop it, and then ninety-eight, so.
Commissioner, maybe this would be a good time to have our engineer, Tim Woodrow, and Blinder C. Gabriel speak to that, because I think since our last meeting and the, the kind of the general math of eight acres times thirty-one units per acre has gotten more specific. And I think we can clarify that actually two-hundred-and-forty units on the site is not actually possible. So Commissioner, would that be a fair time to maybe go to Tim and then?
Yes, we will.
Talking text, maybe we can start with Steve.
That's right.
Yeah.
We'll start with Steve, Gabriel, or Township Planner. Steve's on soon. Okay.
Thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, I think the discussion about the density, the density throughout the existing ordinance, as well as in the proposed text amendment, all talks in terms of net density. The net, using the net lot area for this, for the site. And dividing, dividing that into the number of dwelling units proposed. The net lot area, when you subtract out various rights of way on the site, is seven-point-three-five-three acres. And if you divide that into the original proposed two-hundred-and-forty dwelling units, that brings you above the thirty dwelling units per acre, per net acre, that the proposed text amendment density bonuses add up to. And I think Julie had, had described that in her presentation. To using the seven-point-three-five-three net lot area for the site, to get to thirty units per acre, to get under that thirty units per acre maximum allowed, you've got to go down to two-hundred-and-twenty dwelling units. So to conform and to comply with the proposed text amendment, the plan, any plan submitted on this site is going to have to stay at or below two-hundred-and-twenty dwelling units. One other, one other thought I did want to share, the, the net density bonuses, they, they provide an incentive for redevelopment. That's, that's both good for the applicant, it's also good for the township. The township's been looking for redevelopment along the Philmont Avenue corridor for a long time. So we've got, the, the density bonuses provide that incentive, while at the same time, the extra efforts that are required to qualify for the density bonuses address the major challenges in the Philmont Avenue corridor that the township faces. They address traffic flow improvements. They address stormwater management and flooding, and they address open space. So there's a, you know, there's a give and take in this amendment that provides incentives to the developer for the redevelopment of the corridor, which is an objective of the township. And then those bonuses are, address, the efforts to qualify for those bonuses help to address some of the major challenges facing the township along Philmont Avenue. So that's, that's the way that amendment was structured, and we hope that achieves goals for both parties. Any other, any other questions for me at this point?
Great, Denise. So as we've described that couple of times this evening, we are not looking at an engineered plan, and this is, you know, a concept, a sketch that needs to be fully vetted and formally approved. But I think the ordinance that we're describing tonight really focuses on the things that Steve described. The one thing that I am looking forward to is being able to enforce those stormwater management provisions of the code. As an obligation of this development, I'm hoping to gain some significant stormwater improvement to that Philmont Avenue corridor. And I think this ordinance allows us to do that. That's in conjunction with the other things that we've described, the green space, the pedestrian connections along Philmont Avenue. I think in the Philmont Avenue study, talked about outdoor living rooms. And in earlier versions of this plan, it was one of the things I was very critical of, is that the project was very internal-facing and did not connect with the community as it should. I think what we've been describing in the exhibits that we're seeing tonight does a much better job of connecting the building to the community, and that's one of the things I thought was very important about the project. I, just a moment or note about the conditional use process. The power lies with this board to determine if the applicant has met his minimum obligation to achieve the conditional use approvals. So if there's vagueness, Ruth, I think you guys have the ability to define what it is your expectations would be. And so there is some risk on the developer's part, kind of relying on you all as well, as to not say, well, the traffic impact is going to be a billion dollars. That is a big risk to the developer, because they have not defined a specific term of that. So I think there is some give and take on, on, on the ordinance and on what we'll see coming forward. But I do think, you know, as Steve points out, this has been a blighted property. The revitalization ordinance was adopted to help deal with these properties and bring them back to attractive, useful, and a part of our community. And I think the ordinance, as we spent, you know, a year on it now, I think achieves those goals.
Thank you so much, Tim. Does the board have any questions for Steve or Tim at this time?
I just want to make a call. Um, Mr. Markman. Based upon your reputation, I trust that you're going to build something that looks similar to what you presented tonight. I will not be around for the conditional use, but I would just hope that you would consider the crosswalk that I've spoken about to Ridgeway Park, the vessels on the east or west side. To the other, to Ridgeway Park, to go back and forth from your property to.
So, yeah, that was a good point that Commissioner Currie's made as well, that I think it's, it's important to connect to the surrounding properties, and I think that benefits us too. So if we have residents that want to go across and throw a ball or something, you know, that it's right there. So, yes, we're committed to connect to the surrounding properties.
I mean, obviously, if it's possible.
It's going to be your traffic engineers, kind of.
Exactly. It's, I'll just say a safe connection is needed, but the traffic does flow through there pretty good, so I'll leave that up to the, the engineers to figure out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Denise, I just want to thank you and your staff for all these iterations to get to this point, and for listening to what we've been saying, so thank you.
Anyone else before we open this up to the public, just circle back around to the board? Um, I think Nan is not with us tonight, are they, Chris?
Correct. So since we're in the ordinance phase and they had provided their review of the sketch, I would hold off on, I personally did not invite them to the meeting. I would have them come back and give this proceeds to, to the land development process.
And they didn't really have an exact number on the number of trips or a lot lower because they didn't account.
Or they treated it as if it was just a regular multifamily building, whereas their numbers would actually adjust lower based off of it being a TOD.
TOD and process of transportation, so. Right, at this point in time, I will open up for public comment, and we'll start with residents in the room first. If everyone could just go up to the podium and state your address for the record.
Oh, that's good.
Okay. You're fast.
Surprising for fifty-three years old. But anyway, my name is Jim Burrows, three-one-three-seven Maple Road. Again, I can see the proposed development site from my kitchen window. First of all, let me start by saying, Jill, thank you very much for your service to this township. It's greatly appreciated by everyone here. Going further, Mr. Markman, I have a question. Have you ever done a project this close? And I understand it's on the amendment, but I just have a couple of questions for Mr. Markman, if that's okay.
Oh, it's a public comment. So let me ask the board the questions or throw them out there and we'll see if we can answer them. It's just public.
Do you know, do you know another developer that's built a project so close to a problem flooding traffic area?
In the county, in the state?
In this township.
In this township?
Well, that's really what I'm talking about, the township.
The Western project, or similarly situated, where it's sitting in a flooding problem.
And which project is that?
Best examples would be, so there's the Arbor Square Senior Living, which is under construction across the street from Wawa. That project, they had to recreate and redefine floodway, and we're to fill that, not necessarily on this site.
Okay.
And then I guess the other multifamily example that is used frequently is the Huntington Place condos, which was done as a coordination project over others, female and township. And those are two-hundred-and-thirty-six condos that. And those are 236 condos that are.
Okay, I'm just, you know, my concerns are traffic, flooding. Been dealing with my whole life and certain members here are well aware of that. And the other thing is, and this was mentioned at previous meetings, is children going into our schools. I don't know how, I mean, sure, there's examples and things you can take from other areas. But is there another, another project going on with the proximity to Philadelphia? Because anyone who knows here, anyone who's lived here for any number of years knows that they will come across the railroad tracks just to put their children through the school. So I said, I think personally, I think those numbers are skewed. And again, opinions. I, 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 you know, I appreciate what the township is doing. And, and Mr. Markman has said, or I, I have heard here tonight that, that we're somewhere in the, in the, in the area of $10 million that BT has, I, I believe, committed.
In, in that, the investment.
The, the.
Committed to invest. Improvements in stormwater traffic along Philmont Avenue. They cost the Dallas Tech a million dollars, is part of the project.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you would say garage, but I consider the garage part of the project, but it works into the big pictures. I, I get that, you know. You know, look, I'm not the shepherd stealing the shit, but I understand business. And that's what this is, this is a business decision. You know, they bought that property many years ago. And I, and I've seen it sit there vacant, I would have hoped for something different because it's in such close proximity to my house. I would have hoped for something different, but it doesn't seem at this time that it's realistic. So, but you know, we'll, you know, I'll be back and, and we'll continue to see where this takes. I, I just have reservations because, you know, down the road, and we've seen it happen, is someone builds something, it's not profitable for them. Would they do? They sell it. Mr. Markman has made, BT has made the commitments. But down the road, we don't know what's going to happen. I'm not going anywhere, I'm not, I'm not leaving this township till, till I'm worm food. Okay, so I'm just trying to look out for the township, that, that's all.
You may need an apartment someday.
I'll put an elevator in my house.
Let me, let me just address that point.
That's fine.
Whatever his approvals are, conditions, restrictions, he sells it to somebody else, it's going to run with that. It's not going, they're not going to be able to change that, it's going to run with the land.
But there's also an overlay to that, which would be, there's, there's more areas developed along the Philmont Card. And will they be looking for the same? And you have the, you know, the responsibility, grant or not grant, amendments and whatnot, or, or is this a one-time thing to, 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 to change this amendment? If the approval is given for BT, will the new, like, you're making, if you're changing an amendment, I'm guessing the next person who wants to come in and build along there is going to get the same benefits, I would guess.
This ordinance applies to a specific overlay district. And you're right, it, it applies to all of the properties.
It, it applies to Philmont Card?
No, it's not. It applies to the, the TOD overlay district, which is in proximity to the two train stations. It does not apply to the entire Philmont Card.
Okay, understood.
You'd have to have an engineer take a look at, on a parcel by parcel basis, as to how this specific test would be able to benefit those individual properties. That kind of next has to answer that.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. So it, it is up to the, the commissioners here tonight to, you know, take us forward a step, whatever that decision may be. And I would like to say I respect your decisions, or the last time I was here, I did not, but that, that's your decision. So. That's where Texas. Thank you very much. Thank you for listening.
Robert Cullen, 3120 Philmont Avenue. Jill, thank you for your comments, I had that on my list. I was concerned with, you know, the tran, transactions of people going from the apartment complexes to the Ridgeway Park. Philmont Avenue has always been, you know, abused by traffic. And even though it's a 35 mile zone, very few people obey it. So that's, that's always concern with crossing from one side of Philmont to the other. A couple of things that I don't think have been talked about. And what I was thinking about, you're building a four-story apartment complex, which almost backs up to the residential areas of, I think it's Maple and Cathy Roads. And you're going to have significant lighting coming from the apartment complex. So is there anything in the plans or projections in order to mitigate that those lighting of, you know, were affecting the residents in that area?
Okay, yeah, Mr. Cullen, there is. So ordinance does have provisions for lighting and shielding and assure that that light spill adversely impacts our neighbors. Again, so many ordinance phases, it's a little premature to have those discussions. But that is certainly one of the things that we look at during the land development process.
Okay, the, the other, the other issue that I have is with parking spots. And I was just wondering, how many parking spots would be required for a 3,000 square foot retail space?
So nine, 200, so 3,000 divided by 200 is about 15 spaces in that range.
Okay. The, the reason I ask, because I was running the, the numbers based upon what it, what's been said in previous meetings, that approximately you have 1.7 parking spots for a two-bedroom unit and one and a half parking spots for a one-bedroom unit. That comes out to about 357 parking spots. And then if you add one to that, another 15, maybe 20 spots for the retail space, you're up over 370 spots. And my understanding is that the property, even with the two-story garage, is only set up for 400 parking spots, 400 parking spaces, which basically leaves virtually no room for the residents to have guests over because there would be no place for them to park. If people are coming in after dark, they can't park at Ridgeway Park. I understand that there's a, you know, that that's not permitted for after-hours parking there. So my concern is, you know, the parking on the facility.
They have 401 in the garage. And I just counted it out, it could be one or two, it could be a little bit more. But I counted about 38 in the side lot for the retail. Just a quick, just a quick, you know, my eyes aren't perfect anymore, I'm waiting for new glasses. But that's what I counted on the side. There's a separate parking garage on the retail on the side.
So if I could just make a comment, so we've studied our other apartment complexes and generally we park about 1.5 spaces per unit. Now, they're not all next to a train station. So generally, when you have people next to a train station in your, and we've actually reduced the number of two-bedroom units, which would be more likely to have more cars. But when you're next to a train station, you're less likely to have two cars per unit. So we generally see about one and a half, it's probably going to be a little lighter because the train station's right there. But we feel like it's adequate when we park based on our experience in other projects.
And if you get a denester, like my mother-in-law, she's at the Regency, a lot of those people don't even have cars.
Well, my in-laws are in a closet, a two-bedroom, and they have one car.
Yeah, all one car.
Yeah.
Okay.
So just a simple thought.
All right, well, those were my concerns, thank you.
Okay, anyone else in the room have any questions? If not, we'll move to one on. EJ, any answers?
I see two, I'll just go down the row. EJ, did you just call my name?
I did, yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm so sorry to not be there in person. My daughter had a procedure today and I needed to take care of her, so I'm just, I'm late. I don't know what was discussed, I just got on maybe 10, 15 minutes ago. So if this was discussed, feel free to redirect me to, you know, a commissioner and I can get the answer offline, but. So the planning commission approved this, not unanimously, but they did approve it, it's being bounced to the Board of Commissioners. Pending an approval, if, if the Board of Commissioners were to approve this, what's, what's the next process? That's one of my, you know, what are, what are the steps that occur after this? And then my next question is, are there and/or can there be contingencies on coordinating construction in and around, I guess, the proposed Philmont or the approved Philmont project, I'm sorry, Philmont Country Club project and the circle? Is there a way that we can avoid, you know, everything happening at once? I'm just thinking that if everything is connected and built, you know, supposed calculations based on the circle, I'm just wondering what that, what the phasing of construction would be? And how can we avoid too much happening at one time? I'm sorry, I'm blabbering, so hopefully you understand my question.
Laura, it's Chris Hoffman, I'm, I'm going to give the first crack at an, an answer there. So the first one in terms of process, hypothetically, if the ordinance is approved tonight, then the entirety of land development would be ahead. And the first phase would be the conditional use hearing. So BT Philmont would submit that application, that would be reviewed by the planning commission, and then there would be a quasi-judicial hearing with the Board of Commissioners to determine that the standards for this development to proceed have been met. They would do that hearing, close the record, and then likely at the following meeting would vote on a decision related to the conditional use. So does that help from kind of next?
It does, thanks, thank you.
And then in terms of contingencies for coordinating a whole lot of construction happening in one location all of a sudden, I guess some of that remains to be seen. Because again, this is very early, it's just an ordinance and no specific plan, plan approval would happen for some time. But you're right, that, that's a, a major consideration because this project, as well as the Philmont Country Club development, will take access to state roads. So both of those projects, absent the roundabout, which is a wonderful gift to the. They would both receive highway occupancy permits that would go, would come along with obligations for certain improvements for them to take access to the road. The unique component to this is that separate of these projects, there's this huge improvement that is going to happen funded with federal dollars through state. So I think what remains to be seen in the conversations that need to be had are that kind of putting all of the stakeholders in a room together to figure out, how does that time work? I would be surprised if Penn dump, not knowing exactly when they're going to go to construction, I mean, I'm bound to conclude either of these developments. But it would be a, a relevant consideration as to what is the timing of the roundabout in relation to these two projects. And obviously, we share that interest. So that would be something that we would continue to get feedback on from the actual decision makers who in this instance is heading up.
Thanks, Chris.
And then next, Michael Barari.
Good evening, everyone, I hope you can hear me okay. Michael Barari, 240 Barnsley Avenue. Have a couple of questions, of the increase in density units to get to the 30, how many of those are being satisfied with a fee in lieu of actual work?
I don't know that there's a linear connection with the way this question is being.
No, I, so I guess, I heard, but I guess what I heard during the presentation was five units for traffic improvements. So obviously, there's five there that are being satisfied with a.
So Mr. Barari, it's three units per acre. And that, that's, that's a provision in the current ordinance. And that the change to this because the funding for the two intersections that were incentivized in our, I mean, have already been accomplished, this is a different way for the developer to participate in this for improvements, but it's three units per acre.
So just three of the 30 are being signed with a fee?
Well, it's about 20 units, three times seven. About, about 21.
Yes, of the 30, how many? So it's three of the 30, three is by incentivized there.
On a per. Possibly, and then another five, either by the onsite stormwater facilities as directed by Tim or by off-site fees.
But it's on the front right now, but that's.
In theory, another five. At most.
And that fee is already set, or is that something to be determined by the board at a later date?
That'll be part of the conditional use proceeding.
As the plan pursues, if, if.
All the, all the density provisions and the fees and the environmental conditions in the, in the ordinance will all have to be fleshed out during the additional use proceeding. The applicant will propose their plan and how they intend to meet those requirements. I mean, one of the things is possibly some off-site stormwater management. And Tim has some ideas about it, the specifics are going to be identified and nailed down during the conditional use proceeding.
Okay, and then I guess one last comment, I would caution the board to take into consideration that if the calculations for children attending the schools is not accurate, there's really no fixing that after the fact. So just keep in mind that, that those numbers could easily go the other way. And then we're all stuck paying for that for a very, very long time as we're all taxpaying residents. And that's just a comment, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Anyone has any comments, if you could raise your hand on Zoom?
Okay, Denise.
Well.
There's one more.
One more, yeah.
O'Connell is the name. Is that anyone?
Okay.
Hello?
Yes, hello.
Hi, Denise. It's Maureen O'Connor. I live on Penny Road. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
All right. I'm, I'm just concerned, how high is this building going to be? How many stories? Four?
Four stories.
Okay. I mean, I don't live where I would be impacted by this building. But in past situations, when I was looking into construction, I was not permitted to put an extension onto a house because of the fact that I would obstruct somebody's light. Also for privacy issues. The people in the apartments, are they going to be staring down into other people's backyards? You know? Are they going to be causing somebody's backyard to go completely black? Because of the shadow?
The back of the building faces Tomlinson Road.
Yeah.
Train tracks.
The, the train tracks, the train tracks.
That's right. How close is the building physically from somebody's backyard?
So you'd have to go, I think, to the other side of the park to get the closest to the backyard. So that's.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty far, far away. It has to go very far past the J Company. So I, I don't even think we'd be pretty, no one's very close.
No.
Not even.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'm just really concerned for the people that live near to where the construction is going to be placed because, I mean, Lower Moreland is not a township of multi-story buildings generally. And this would sort of denote a specific turn of events for the township. And I don't think it's a good, a good idea for the township as far as property values and the overall living conditions for people. I wouldn't want to look out on a four-story building if I was paying the, the taxes that we pay in our township. I pay it because it's a good township. But if we're going to be staring out at a four-story building, I'm not. I wouldn't be happy if I was one of those residents. So that's my comment. Really don't think it's a good idea for the township.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we have Jen.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Sure, yes.
My name is Jen McGuigan. I live at 531 Penny Road.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. I was listening to some of the comments earlier and I understand, please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Markman said there have been 10 to 12 million dollars in concessions for this project. And he is hoping that this would become the top multimodal development in the area. It is very clear that Mr. Markman and his associates have run their numbers and rightly so they should. They're in this for the business. They take it to the nth degree to make sure that what they're doing is still going to be profitable. I, I would implore the board to do the same. If he has 98 units that are two bedrooms, if you go to the nth degree, that is a possibility of 196 children in Lower Moreland. I'm certainly not saying that that is going to happen. But if you take it to the nth degree, that is a possibility that you could have two children per unit in 96 units. Lower More, I'm sorry, 98 units, excuse me. Lower Moreland is currently, the district is currently building a new high school to handle the capacity of children. So the $660,000 that Mr. Markman has quoted as being a bonus to the district pales in comparison to the $70 million that is now on the table to build a new high school to handle the capacity of our township. I just implore the board to run the numbers as Mr. Markman and his associates have done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Please raise your hand. Is anyone?
I do not. No.
Okay. We don't see anyone else who's hands raised. It's close for public coming this time. Does the board have any other comments or questions? Anything that they would?
Just last question about how much if this were to proceed about, how much of an investment is, is this into the property as a whole? Jill, can you spark up this? Rough estimate. Estimate of project if you can answer that.
Roughly $60 million. Yeah. Have you hit it? Hit her today.
Okay. Mr. Markman, you spoke previous meetings about how there's been a lot of questions to us and I know you mentioned us, but for people that haven't been on previous Zooms or meetings and whatnot, how, you know, the influx of children and the apartment complexes are controlled. Could you just speak about that?
Sure.
Tonight, so.
So, yeah, so, so essentially, I think you're saying our rule is. So, so the rule is we cannot have more than two residents per bedroom. So if you look at a one-bedroom apartment unit, you can only have two people living in that unit. So the whole point was with the, because we've limited the number of two-bedroom units, where each two-bedroom units could essentially have four people in it. You're reducing the possibility of there potentially being more kids. And I can tell you in all of our other new apartment projects that were shown on the sheet, we do not have any school-aged children living in one-bedroom units. They're all living in the two-bedroom units. Now, Honeyton Place Carson Terrace, as you call it now, has 90% two-bedroom units. So essentially that allows for many, many more kids. They're also 30% bigger than we would intend to build here. So common sense dictates that if you have a bigger unit, you have more two-bedroom units, you're going to have more children. Notwithstanding all of that, we've taken their ratios, even though they're bigger, even though they're mostly two-bedrooms, and we've applied it to our project. And that's where we came up with the 25. If you take all our other projects and you apply it, it's going to be more like 10 or 12 kids. But we've used the prime example of what exists in the township today to come up with the 25 school children as real-time data. So.
Do they have a similar occupancy with it?
I, I don't, I'm not sure.
Okay.
The challenge for that, Joe, would be that now that primarily voters.
Yeah.
That there would not be that ratio. It's possible that they would have when they were.
Okay. And I did ask you at a previous meeting if you did say that the resident did wind up having children on a sofa or a bed in the living room.
They would be evicted. So I, I can tell you, I just gave a resident a notice to evict because their dog was pooping in the hallway. I mean, the way we run these things, it has to be, you know, we, we have to run it the right way or else the reputation goes down, the property goes down. So we're very careful. And if you have more than two residents per bedroom, you will be evicted and do it all.
I told you, I did see the 555 flats and I'm a mom of three boys now, men. And I don't know that I would have taken one of my boys. It was, it's a really nice place and I am. And there won't be a playground. You're not proposing a playground.
Yeah.
Okay. That doesn't make it attractive for someone.
And you're also next to the train tracks. I mean, it's just with the size of the units, with the proximity to the train station, the proximity to Philmont Avenue, it's not a conducive environment for school-aged children. You're more likely not to live, you want to live in a house with the yard. So if you can afford to rent a house with the yard, that's where you're going. Now, we'll have some kids, obviously, in the two-bedroom units, but we just don't have many. So.
Does the board have any other questions?
I have one question.
Sure.
Mr. Markman says in one of the notes here that the majority of children have one parent living in a different home in the district.
Yeah.
So a lot of residents are single parent households. Have you guys done any studies into how many of those students lived already in the district? And how many are new students per year?
So, so at the 555 flats, I looked at that. And 75% of my schoolchildren that are there, we don't have many, all have another home in the district. So these apartments are magnets for divorcees. And what happens is when people get divorced, the spouse that moves out of the house wants to live in close proximity to the children. So what typically happens is they'll take a unit, they'll take a two-bedroom unit. So on the weekends when their kids, they have custody of their children, they'll come there. So we don't, as, as far as the primary residents, you know, there's a few, but not many. Most of them have other houses in the district. And that's why they live here, because they're getting divorced, but they want to be around their family, their kids. So.
Okay. Now, the numbers that you list here, are these numbers of total students or these new additional students in school districts?
That's total. I'm going to call these kids. So there's going to be a division. Each property is different, but a 555 flat, 75% of them have another house in the district.
Well, Felix, do you want to explain what's in front of us here?
The boards, you know, what you have in front of you, the rules have been advertised for the MTC that you're hearing for your. It's just a per decision. Prove or not, you know, based on what you heard tonight, just one of you would need to make a motion, one way or another, to move this forward.
Well, I want to acknowledge all the comments that were made by the public. And I think all of us over the last few months have heard a lot of concerns from residents. I sent notes because it's been a lot, we've heard a lot about density, which are the number of units. I think that the developer has worked. First, it came in with 250 units, the original sketch, then it went down to 225. Now it's we have 220. And then reduction, the reduction, I think it's been at least three reductions with the number of two-bedroom units. I'm happy here, 98 on two bedrooms, two bedrooms, and then even reduction on one bedroom for a lower number of 220 overall. I think what's in front of us really is, do we leave this property the way it is right now? Zoned exactly the way it is, which is 17,000 square feet of retail space. A set of parking garage, another residential parking garage, and 143 units that basically is sitting there. Or do we move forward and make this, make a change? Or something that's in front of us. I'm sorry to give you such a hard time. But it's, it, I did see 555 flats. And I did not see it from another direction. I've driven by it. I have friends that live there. It's a step up from, from 555 flats. We did ask this developer, for everything under the sun, to make this complex something that will really be special in Lower Moreland. Do I personally love the idea of an apartment complex in Lower Moreland? No. But according to the law, we have to allow for all different types of uses within our within, within the law. It's, it's the law. We can't say no to, to everything, but we can work within the parameters of the law. And the other issues are school and school-aged students, which I think, you know, I appreciate you calming down as long as you possibly could. And it's traffic and flooding. And within this ordinance, I think there done a lot with regard to this ordinance. With, I think, I'm going to make a recommendation forward. I, in the land development phase, I, I'm looking forward to seeing a lot of what we can accomplish and what you're, you can accomplish in the conditional use phase with regard to the stormwater management on and off site. I'm looking forward to seeing your, your plan with regards to the meta, the outdoor living room, the crosswalk. What you feel on that, what Jill said, and the, the trail, the Philmont Trail, the connectability to the community. And there's a lot of exciting features with regard to this change. I also want to say that a change in our zoning is something that I personally don't take lightly. And I don't think the community takes it lightly. So I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 760. But also, I want to, I'm interested, how much of the commission's aware about this? I, I don't know. You know, I, I don't, that's, these are my feelings. This is what's in front of us. Leave it the way it is and it can sit or move forward with something that can be, you know, breathe, help us with the flooding on Philmont Avenue. And and, and help the area.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Second. It is motioned and seconded to approve the text amendment ordinance number 760 as described. All those in favor, please say your type by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yay.
Okay. Let the record, like we had one debate, the by their staying. Yeah, I saw it. Thank you.
Thanks, Graham.
Okay. Next item on my agenda is Consider As For Release, West Room 2507 Philmont Avenue. And it's number 1903. Tim. Can you give us a overview? I saw there's a lot of work on the Culver, erosion control, storm.
The biggest thing that they're releasing this evening is that Culver. So that is the new major driveway that will connect Philmont Avenue to the site. That is, and it's functioning and it's looking pretty good down there. They've a lot of their control measures and stormwater work is in place. They hope they update it this week, you know, the base course of those parking areas, which should help greatly when they're keeping area clean, Philmont Avenue free of dust and debris. So I think they're certainly entitled to the release this evening.
Well, I see, so that's for this. There's an amount of $108,522. And just a balance of 1,144,883,70 cents. So basically, I just need to make a motion to Does anyone have any questions to support? Have any questions for the As For Release?
I don't have a question. I just want to have a, a quick comment, just because it is West Room.
Yeah.
And mention that Tim, myself, the manager, and the construction company, the name escapes me right now.
Versary.
Yes. We had a little meeting about working past ordinance hours and exiting the site and what the conditions look like. And trying to give us a projected schedule ahead of time of what their construction activity. and trying to give us a projected schedule ahead of time of what their construction activities are. So any neighbor who asks can kind of know what to expect moving forward for the project. And I can say that I think that their conditions, like sweeping up at the end of the day, have, have improved a lot since.
You scared your job.
And maybe I scared one person in my life, I don't know. But I kind of, I kind of got tired of, you know, them not taking care of business and working past hours that I think are very generous.
Um, so we kind of had a, a couple of Jesus on the, with the construction company.
So I think anybody that wants to can sign up to get a schedule.
Yeah.
Of.
Like they owe us, I think, um, this Friday, which will be the next projected, you know, construction activities of the next couple of weeks.
Okay, okay. So everybody, so where do, where do people go? Do you interact them to the manager?
Yeah, just, you keep us updated, yeah, so that would be nice. And they're gonna work through the winter and all that stuff.
Yes.
I'm looking forward to having, you know, people moving on the other side.
We're certainly thinking of the state of the wise events.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
We'll make a motion.
We're, we're gonna do.
Okay, public comment and one from the public, yes, go ahead.
Okay, you've got a motion, second?
Somebody second, good.
Uh, Chuck McDay, twenty-four seventy-two, Delmo. Tim, I have a question for you, uh, the basins with any different and the depth any different from the basins that they first originally gave the entire construction sketch to township?
No, that, those basins, Chuck, are permitted under not only average, but also the P A D E period. And the, uh, so that permit that they have obligates them to do a past build survey when they're done with the project, uh, to verify that the volumes that they've constructed are consistent with the design parameters. And they can't close the permit until that is verified.
So the, the one basin, Mr. DeGeorge always asked you about, you know, with the pipe, when we found out that it was abandoned, running into that one basin, but that basin does empty into the Huntington Valley Creek, correct?
It does.
They all empty into the Huntington Valley Creek. So with a hundred year storm, which they're saying Idaho was, and they're predicting every ten years, we're looking at that now. How much water are the people downstream on Philmont Avenue, residents and businesses looking at from adding them basins on that property?
So the good thing is, is that in a, in a one hundred year storm, which is about eight inches of rain distributed over a twenty-four hour period, the people downstream will see less water after development than before. As part of that N P D S current process, the designers are obligated to take a look at the property and develop a pre-development condition that would suggest that twenty percent of the existing impervious area is measured and calculated as if it were a natural meadow, which artificially forces the applicant, the developer, to do a better job, to be overconfident for the project. And so all those series of basins capture the runoff from the buildings, the parking lots, um, they treat that water. So not only rate reduction, but quality improvement and volume reduction, uh, in this modern permit, looking at all of that. So, uh, it will have, again, it's difficult to measure, see the difference just because of the size of the watershed of the Huntington Valley Creek, you know, it's a couple of square miles, five square miles of watershed. So this one small site won't be able to see a difference. But, you know, on average, the water coming off of the property tomorrow will be less than it was just.
Even with the man in the parking space?
Yes. Yeah, that's what those bases are designed to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
I like to believe you, but.
We have proof. Any, any more public comment before I call for the vote? Okay, the motion is second to approve the escrow lease amount of one hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred twenty-two dollars. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I saw it, thank you.
Next review and consider extension of the new period, Marina thirteen fifty-five, Grace Hopper. It's number twenty-one oh one, and, uh, this is just, we're, we're in receiving a letter from Vincent Vieravanti dated December seventh, twenty twenty-one, regarding the above referenced subdivision. And it's just here by granting a ninety day extension to the M P C review period, which expires on December twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. And it's just a ninety day extension, uh, till March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. So, are there any questions from the board?
There's, uh, no action on that.
There's no action on it, except the, uh, the submitted.
Just a comment.
Yeah.
The letter, the letters sort of, uh, you know, are fully written, the way it's written. It's ninety days extension.
Yeah.
Which expires on December twenty-second.
At the current period.
I, I know, I know. I can give you some court cases where that language can create it. So if we could just confirm with Mr. Vieravanti that it's March, whatever ninety days from December twenty-second is. The board accepted your extension to March twenty-second.
If I ask him to sign and return the letter?
Yes.
That's fine, I guess.
Yeah, not that it would ever happen, but.
I see what you're saying.
And let the minutes reflect, Mr. Rice. You know, you, you always should have engineers write these kinds of things, that's the law.
I'm sorry.
Always wants to be an attorney, you ask me.
Does the public have any questions regarding, uh, twenty fifty-five, Grace Hopper? If not, I will accept this letter as submitted.
As adjusted.
As adjusted by solicitor, uh, next is review and consider, uh, a consultant, he scheduled and, uh, attaches a resolution to amend chapter one eighty subdivision of land fee. Schedule per the municipality's planning code, includes the rates of our professional consultants for twenty twenty-two. And these rates are billed to developers paid per, per professional services agreement. Um, for land development or resident upgrading permits, um, for engineer Tim Woodrow. It's the same rate, thank you, Tim. It's a hundred and twenty, a hundred and two dollars and fifty cents, our land planner. Where two is a slight reduction in the amount, a hundred thirty-five dollars. Our authority engineer, C K S, is a slight increase, a hundred and thirty dollars. Our traffic engineer, McMahon, is the same, a hundred ninety-five dollars. And, uh, John Race, our solicitor, is just a little, both slightly higher for real state matters as opposed to his normal township work, uh, which is two hundred dollars. Does anyone have any questions regarding this matter? From, any board have any questions?
Very second, they're done, I thought you were three.
Right. Um, does the public have any questions regarding this matter? So we, if not, we have a resolution in front of us, and it's resolution number twenty-one dash thirty-five. Not only the motion to approve, resolution number twenty-one thirty-five, with the attached be schedule as described.
Is the motion and second to approve resolution number twenty-one dash thirty-five for the hour rate as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I saw it, thank you.
My next is review planned commission appointments, and, uh, the terms of, and commission, or Brian Lewis, one five, and Marshall Cohen, word six, are set to expire on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. So staff will review these decisions and inquire whether Mr. Lewis and Mr. Cohen are interested in continuing to serve in this capacity. Uh, they're doing a job on the planning commission, does the board have any questions regarding? Any questions from the public? If not, manager Hoffman will reach out to them. Uh, next item on my agenda, building officials report. Another healthy month, there were ninety-five permits issued for November, seventy residential renovations, seventeen commercial renovations. Uh, year to date, nine hundred and forty-five permits were issued, last year to date, eight hundred and fifty-seven permits were issued. Nine certificates of occupancy were issued, inspections by type, a hundred and forty-two. Total inspections, a hundred and twenty-two residential, twenty-one commercials. Inspections, thirty complaint violations, and notice, notice to comply, and actions that involve imposed. And they all have the follow-up, and that doesn't account for visits and phone calls that come in, which are many. Use and occupancy certificates that were issued, they have two business UNOs and nine construction UNOs, uh, back into, uh, N P. And next item on my agenda is my liaison report, which my positions of the planning commission and community events. Uh, there is no planning commission meeting, it was canceled for December. And, uh, there will most likely be a planning commission per January, but further information will be provided, uh, for that meeting. And with regard to community events, um, I spoke to E J and to Chris, and, uh, we will be in a holding pattern for the fall events. Um, but I would like to thank everyone that, um, did partake in all our events, especially the October event, which was very successful. Thank all our volunteers, um, and, uh, Joan, Ruth, thank you. Good much. And Joe and Valentine Ward, Dr. Serkin, and the fire company, all our staff. Um, and it's very successful, and looking forward to spring event. I spoke to Pam though, and she's really looking forward to an outside econ. Um, so after not being able to have one for two years, so she's hoping for some help on our events, so. And, um, December was filled with, uh, fun events by L M P D, and the elects the chief, talk about that. It is, and it, and it's all, uh, or his agenda items. And just remind everyone that the Huntington Fire Company is going to be hosting their Santa run for twenty twenty-one, which is Saturday, December eighteenth, at eleven A M, and they posted their route. I shared it, I hope that everybody shares that. And, um, give the residents an opportunity to hang it down on every street, to get down on nearby streets to see Santa. So I want to thank the Huntington Valley Fire Company for, for, um, getting around and seeing the kids, um, Santa and his, and his friends. And, um, as your closers, I'd also like to wish everyone a happy holiday and happy New Year.
Commissioner, before you finish your, is Mr. Gabriel still on the call with us?
Yes.
Steve, I believe this is your last official meeting as a Lower Marlin Township planner. You've been the planner since I've been on the board and even before that, so I just want to thank you on behalf of the board and the staff for everything you've done, going way back to the total rewrite of the code and everything, which you lost sleep over.
Yeah.
I would, please, this is your opportunity to say goodbye, I guess, or thank you, or.
Well, tha- thank you, Commissioner, and, uh, yeah, it, it, it has been a, a real pleasure uh, to serve Lower Marlin as township planner for the last eleven years. I can't believe it's been that long. Uh, I want to thank you all for the support and the respect that I've received, uh, from the Board of Commissioners, Planning Commission, Township Staff and, and Consultants. Uh, it's been a real treat. Many good things have happened in the township over those eleven years, and I want to say you have every right to feel very proud of that. I'm sorry I couldn't be there tonight, it, it just, uh, hasn't, hasn't been working out physically to, to make the trip these days. But good luck to everybody, uh, there as, as you move forward in twenty twenty-two. Um, uh, Chris, you're, you're, you're in good hands with, with that board and, and township staff that you're joining. And, and Jill, good luck, uh, as you move on to newer pursuits. But, uh, and by all means, feel free to drop by the Gabriel hacienda here in Ocean City. Next, next time you're in town, but thanks, everyone, it's, it's been great.
Thank you.
Those planning commission meetings. Thank you so much, that concludes my agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Kurtz. Next is Internal Affairs Committee, uh, under item eight, review and consider minutes of November ninth, twenty twenty-one. Any commissioners have any comments or corrections?
And I would like to, I can motion to approve the minutes of November ninth, twenty twenty-one. Second, the motion is second to approve, who was the motion?
Yeah.
The minutes of November ninth, twenty twenty-one, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I saw it. Review and consider December twenty twenty-one bill list, any commissioners have any comments or corrections? Since it's published on the website too, any body from the public have any comments? Seeing none, then I'd like to make a motion to approve the December twenty twenty-one bill list. Vote.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. Review and consider doctor the twenty twenty-two budget, so it was advertised, and now we're ready to, uh, call for a vote. But the manager, Hoppin, does any highlights you want to give for the twenty twenty-two budget?
I think the simple highlights are that the tax levels are staying the same, your trash rates stay the same, your sewer fees are staying the same. So the ordinance that is in front of you, um, just acknowledges those same tax levels and then, uh, handles the tax levy appropriation, so essentially all the numbers that are in the budget are summarized in this one.
So how did we do that?
It's a magic one.
For good management.
Yeah, you go down.
Any questions for the board?
So simplify. That's excellent.
Any questions for the public before we take a vote for, for the twenty twenty-two?
This is so refreshing.
Did we get on that note, yeah?
Yeah, for sure, love it.
Here none, then I'd like to, uh, make a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-two budget as described.
Second.
With the motion and second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Under item K, review and consider dividend trust agreement and then, um, manager Hoppin.
So this was an item that I alluded to, I think, at the end of our budget process. Um, but it's not something that we've specifically incorporated at this point. Um, but this is an example of already getting to do better than what is approved in the budget. Um, so the Delaware Valley Health Trust is, um, the insurance pool, um, where we, uh, receive our health insurance. Um, and Lower Marlin was one of the member municipalities that was selected, uh, to have the, uh, offer a two-year option. Um, so essentially, in exchange for a commitment to staying in the trust for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, um, we will receive an additional fifty-nine thousand dollar, or fifty-nine thousand and five, five dollar credit um, on our premiums in twenty twenty-two. And then they will also agree to a essentially competitive, uh, rate increase cap of six point five percent, uh, an absolute maximum for twenty twenty-three. However, we have negotiated into the two of the three union contracts that are now complete. Um, and would expect that the third incorporates this as well, the plan design change that will take effect January first of twenty twenty-three. So we'll actually realize additional statements on our premiums when that new plan takes effect. Uh, so that rate cap of six point five percent, um, is only if we stayed with the same plan, that will not be happening, so, uh, essentially reduce premiums in the next two years, which is also something that we have never gotten to say. Um, so in order to take advantage of that, that just requires, um, the board to authorize Commissioner Serkin to sign the addendum to the trust.
Thank you, any questions from the board? Any questions from the public about? Any questions from the public about the trust agreement addendum? Is this a simple resolution?
No resolution, just motion.
Okay. Then I would like to make a motion to approve the dividend trust agreement addendum as described.
Second.
The motion and second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Under item L, review and consider PBA contract agreement. Manager Hoppin, you want to discuss your successful back and forth and coming to permission for the contract?
I wish that was the case.
And then discuss where we are then.
So in order to, in the event we had reached an agreement prior to this meeting, this needed to be an agenda item because it needed to be included on the agenda twenty-four hours in advance of tonight, if the board was going to be able to vote. My last conversation with the PBA bargaining committee did not yield an agreement. There's a specific topic that they are asking for more research on and are agreeable to letting this process go next year in order to continue those good faith conversations. So I do not have any recommendation or resolution for the vote this evening. And we will hope to accomplish that early in two thousand and twenty-two. Any hypothetical that we cannot do that, the process would push us towards arbitration, which we will try to avoid at all costs. But just realm of possibility, that is what is at us. So nothing specific to the realm.
Okay. Thank you for that update. And next is item M, review and consider civil service commission appointment. I have my place for that. So we have somebody whose resume was submitted to the board, Gene Conway. He actually attended the last civil service meeting just as a guest member. And this is somebody that is known to the chief, and the chief recommended him privately. And I wanted to ask the commissioners if they have any questions before we come to the motion to approve. Any questions? And manager, this is to fill a vacancy. So this is a interim appointment?
Correct.
Any questions from the public for the civil service commission appointment? Then I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number two thousand and one dash thirty-six, appointing Gene Conway to the Civil Service Commission for a term commencing December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one and ending September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
With the motion and second to approve resolution number two thousand and one dash thirty-six, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Under item N, administration report. Manager Hoppin, you want to summarize anything from your report?
Sure, sir. Just a few brief items to add for everybody's interest this evening. So the first is just wanted to specifically call out that we're going to be pursuing the vehicle and equipment lease program similar to what we did, I guess it started two years ago, for acquisition of more vehicles using the same budget allocations. So we did find out that interest rates put us in a position where that would be something that we could enthusiastically recommend to the board. And specifically, this will allow us to not just purchase the chief's vehicle, but to also replace the lieutenant's vehicle, which was purchased at the same time, like in two thousand and nine or ten. And utilizing that same forty-five thousand dollar budget allocation to then get those two vehicles will then have three payments where the small interest amounts will only apply in years two and three. If there is an incentive and that would help us get a lower interest rate, there is one item from the public works capital budget, which we would include in that, which is that sign return. So just wanting to let the board know that that's something that we will get the formal proposals for and bring that to the board for consideration, hopefully by the January. If not by then, then by February. And then just a brief update on the Ridgeway Film and Country Club development. We had our staff meeting with them, I guess, at some point in November, and we are expecting submission of their final plans. Hopefully by the end of the year, if not then by sometime in early January, which would then kickstart that remaining public review process. And then also just wanted to call out, because I think it was in my reports and had also been in my email weekly reports. Then our next fire services meeting for Commissioner Serkin and I will be meeting with Burnett and Borrow officials. We did change that meeting date from next week to January fourth. So just wanted you to be aware of that. And that is everything that I have for this. It must have already specified.
Any questions for the manager? Any questions from the public? Assistant Manager Lee.
Just a couple of things. The budget, you just approved and adopted for two thousand and twenty-two. So I will be incorporating that within the next week to get ready for the new year and also do the two thousand and twenty-one closeout that will be starting this week. And all the direct reports. And just to update you on HR, police have one new part-timer hired that was added to our payroll. And the new commissioner, he was recently added, as well as the new commissioner that was in January. And then the only other thing is the newsletter is still on schedule for distribution sometime later in January. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for the assistant manager?
No, Chairman, but I just want to, EJ and I keep reaching out to the Delaware Ford Tourism and Commerce and trying to set up a meeting for businesses. So just on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I also have EJ's report. She states that the January planning commission might include thirteen fifty-five grass upper and possibly film and country clubs, just for people who are interested in those plans.
Great, thank you. Under item tax collector's report, we have our elected tax collector on the line with us. Does anybody have any questions about the report or any question directed to our elected tax collector team?
Thank you, Dr. Serkin. The outstanding balance that remains to be collected is one hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred dollars. That includes all of the taxes in addition to the trash. We were at ninety-seven point eighty-five percent collected for face, which includes discount and penalty reminder letters went out, and they are bringing in some of the balances that are due. So I'm hoping for more collections by the end of December. There will be office hours on Thursday, December the thirtieth. So if you know anybody that needs to come in, I will be in the office. Thank you very much.
Any questions from the board or from the public for the tax collect? And hearing none, I'd like to request that the tax collectors report be accepted as submitted. Thank you. Under item A, liaison report. So I attended the school board's reorganization meeting and then their regular meeting on the new board. And also we had a civil service commission meeting, and I will defer to the chief and public safety chair to discuss that further. And that completes the internal affairs committee. The chair now recognizes Commissioner Canal, the chair of the public safety committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Serkin. First work business I have tonight is hiring a new officer. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Scarrato, if you would have anything to say on this before I go on further.
So tonight we're asking the board to provide a conditional offer of employment to the number one candidate from our certified list for new hires. His name is John McBride. He is a, I won't get into a whole lot of background on him, but he has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He's currently a sergeant with the Philadelphia Police Department. He has nearly eight years of service with Philadelphia. He's thirty-two years of age. He lives not too far from here in northeast Philly. He was an excellent candidate. He did a really, really fine job in the hiring process. And we'd like to recommend him to receive the offer.
Any questions from the board?
What division was he in?
He's currently a supervisor in the thirty-fifth district.
Any other questions from the board? Anything from the public? No. Then I would like a motion, conditional offer of employment to John McBride, based on his physical and physical psychiatric exams.
Second.
With the motion and second to offer conditional offer of employment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Next order of business is Pennsylvania opioid settlement. Assistant Royce has prepared the tax resolution for the board's consideration. It authorizes township's participation in settlements with manufacturers and several distributors of opioids. This is based on first funds received from AG's office earlier this year. Proposed resolution and two participation forms are attached to our book here. John, is there anything you want to add to this? I know your voice is a little scratchy.
Well, you have a memo from me in here that sort of explains this. This is being driven by the state attorney general. Pennsylvania is a party of plaintiffs. Not all states are plaintiffs. Some counties are plaintiffs. And there's an effort here to settle this. And the more municipalities that participate, basically you're participating by releasing any claim over Marlin like that.
Individually.
Individual, which you wouldn't pursue. You wouldn't, to try to prove that on a individual municipal basis would be difficult and expensive. So it's a release. The opioid manufacturers are going to pay Pennsylvania twenty-two point seven million dollars. Then they want the larger municipalities to sign off on it in some fashion. So Attorney General made the request, he's sort of running this process. They're looking for the larger municipalities to participate. I registered Lower Marlin and got the forms, the releases, which you now have in front of you approved. This will authorize Chris to sign off on those. I didn't have to upload those by the end of the year. And no money will flow directly to Lower Marlin if it comes into the county. It'll go to Montgomery County. So that'll fund whatever county-wide drug prevention programs are involved. So that's what this is about. It's no cost to Lower Marlin. You know, the possibly that the state and the county would seek funds that they don't currently have. They would be restricted to drug prevention, drug treatment programs and education. And so I think the memo sort of spells out what this is. A lot of municipalities haven't gotten involved in this, everything registered. There is a dispute going on between Attorney General Shapiro and City of Philadelphia about how much money City of Philadelphia should get. And they could blow this whole thing up. But, you know, that's, this is just, you know, registering and signing up. You are releasing any possible claims you would have, which I don't think you have any, that you'd be able to prove without spending a whole lot of money and joining with other municipalities. So ultimately help the county, which ultimately helps us in general. Right. I mean, that's the theory. Delaware County is a party. Montgomery County's not. And Delaware, I'm involved in Delaware County, and the money will come to the county agencies that do county-wide drug programs, which will filter down and that local municipalities will have, but no direct money to municipal municipalities on this.
Any questions from the board? Anything from the public? Motion to approve resolution number two thousand and one thirty-seven, Mr. Scarr.
Motion and second to approve twenty-one dash thirty-seven, thirty-seven as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Next, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Scarrato for his report.
Okay. Back in November, we had two assaults, one on Murray Avenue, one on Huntington Platon County line. We had a number of crime, property crimes, including five criminal mischiefs and a number of thefts. One job that I wanted to bring to your attention, Officer Saman Hashimi is part of our mountain bike patrol. And in November, one evening, he dismounted, went out on his bike in Ruby Lane Steel Road, Steel Lane back near County Line Road, Alpha Pine. And during, while patrolling on the mountain bike at three AM, he spotted a person that was going through vehicles, stealing items from inside locked cars, unlocked cars, rather. He called out with the suspicious person, had backup respond. A couple of our commissioners at our quarterly meeting were able to see the video. He was able to easily run the person down on the bike and advise them to give up prior to any need for a physical force. The person basically sprinted a little while, got very tired and gave up. So
Same as just casually playing.
Yeah, it was a pretty striking video, and it's really nice to see, you know, a program that we believed in, that we believed could actually do that, actually work in that way. So you know, it was an excellent job by Sam, and I'm sure he'll be getting put in for an accommodation for that arrest. And again, above and beyond, the middle of November, it was pretty chilly out, getting out on his bike and doing a great job for us. So that was a really, really good job on behalf of some of our officers. We did have some free public intoxication cases, eight drug violation cases, seven DUIs over the previous month. A number of fraud investigations. So again, we encourage our residents to be aware of things like credit card fraud, unemployment fraud, identity theft. Don't hesitate to call our police department with those cases. We also had the conviction, I may have mentioned this last month, but I'm not sure. We did have the conviction of an officer that assaulted, one of our, an offender that assaulted Officer Chris Daniel back in two thousand and twenty. That subject was sentenced to, convicted with aggravated assault on law enforcement and dealing with proceeds of stolen goods and will hopefully be behind bars for a long time. We also, there was a conviction of William Torres, who was sentenced to life in prison without possibility parole for the twenty-nineteen murder of a Lower Marlin resident. We also had a overdose. We're talking about the drug programs. The county is running numerous drug programs, so probably a good benefit. We did have a case where a twenty-six-year-old male resident from Lower Marlin died of a drug overdose. We were able to identify who delivered those drugs to him. That person was subsequently charged with possession intent to deliver criminal use of communication facility. And preliminary hearing is scheduled in February. And last, our K-9 update, Officer Sierra Volker and K-9 Officer Kermit have graduated from the Penn Vet Working Center Patrol School. She is now fully trained in both narcotics detection and patrol techniques and is deployed in the township on a regular shift. So we're excited with that current development.
Any questions? Questions from the board? Anything from the public? Thank you very much. Fire marshal Shaw.
Evening. Couple of small fires in Honeyville Valley responded to during the month. Two were special on Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving, one on Thanksgiving morning, one Thanksgiving night. We had a small child pull alarm at Carson Terrace. We did turn that situation over to management. We met, emergency management issues, we met with Bob Cabello from the FEMA. We talked about the flood plain areas, some past flooding and recovery of the township, and some helpful information to assist us with flooding and recovery in the future. I also wanted just to reach out and thank Chief Scarrato. He's been working with the other chiefs and trying to get the fire department and the police department to talk to each other on the radios. And I know he's been a big backer of this, so hopefully we're, we'll get to that situation soon. It's been a uphill struggle for many months. And I wanted to thank Deputy Director Rich Worthington. He did an active shooter and shooter drill at the Huntington Valley Surgery Center on Byberry Route this past month. This is the third program that he's done over there. We had thirty-six staff and nurses participate with Officer Brahmer, Detective Brahmer. This time we incorporated At this time, we incorporated the Brent Anthony EMS and Huntington Valley Fire Company. So we're starting to progress further into the emergency management side of this and bring in police, fire and EMS. We have, even though it's, it's not a good topic to discuss, but they're very appreciative of what we do and they want to have even some more training, so Rich did put a lot of work into that. As far as COVID, Gloria Day Matter and Gloria Day Towers have had the county come down and do the vaccine booster clinics at the site. From the last, from the last tally, they're about eighty-five percent taken care of and completed. There's a, I think, having one more to finish up some of the vaccines. And Montgomery County is just keeping us posted on things that are going in the county. And as far as we've given out to the fire police, the booster locations and the testing locations. Just a lot of fire investigations with other fire marshals due to vacations or guys away. One notable one, we had a Tesla car fire in Upper Dublin, which probably was nation, was nationally recognized and I'm sure it's not, that file will be open for quite a while, to be true. And just, Joe and I are trying to clean up some UNOs for the rest of the year and just out doing inspections and cleaning some other stuff up before the next year.
Very much. Any questions from the board? Anything from the public?
Thank you.
That takes me to my liaison reports. My first liaison is with the HAA. I know they're starting in-house basketball, this is coming Saturday, the tryouts are on Saturday as well. And locals speaking with them and getting started with that liaison position. Let's see what happens on that one. And then with the library, they're back open seven days a week. I was at their meeting last Thursday, progress over there, everything pretty good. That's all I have. Turn me back over to Commissioner Sear.
Thank you, Commissioner Collins, Chair of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you much, very much, Mr. Chairman. Public Works Committee Chair is the best job. I just want to let you all know when you're going with the bids next year in January, this is the best position. Under item U, we have review and consider shared maintenance agreement, County Line and Pine Traffic Signal. Everybody knows the Toner Homes Construction Project, it's in Southampton. It's got the big water tower at Pine and County Line, anyway, there's a, there's a traffic signal there. And this agreement that's attached would authorize lower Moreland to take the lead on the signal maintenance, but we will bill Southampton for fifty percent of the cost. Without the agreement, we would be responsible for all the costs. So it's been recommended that we approve this agreement. Does anybody have any questions? Anybody from the public? Hearing now, I'd like to make a motion to approve the shared traffic maintenance agreement for the County Line and Pine intersection with Lower Southampton Township.
There's a motion and second to approve the shared maintenance agreement, County Line and Pine Road Traffic Signal. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Under item V, we have review and consider lower Moreland Township Authority appointment. And from what I understand, Mr. Sal is interested in continuing to serve in his capacity. There's a resolution for him to be reappointed to a five-year term. Any questions from the board on the replacement of Mr. Sal? Any questions from the public? Okay, hearing now, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash thirty-eight, reappoint Dave Sal a five-year term on the Lower Southampton Township Authority commencing January third, twenty twenty-two and ending on January second, twenty twenty-two.
Second, a motion and second to approve resolution number twenty-one dash thirty-eight as described, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Okay, under item W, we have, under Parks Directive, Mr. Warren.
I would just say with the beautiful weather, we were able to fly through the leaves this year and this is the last week. That will be done, go do the entire town tomorrow. So we'll, we'll finish, we'll go out Thursday, Friday, and I'm sure we'll chase some bodies next week. It went very smoothly. It's good, we got rid of our first, we actually tightened up our compost row, so we were able to fit about ten rows in now. We got rid of the first ten already, so we're ready to start processing. We're rated, we're at about sixty-five hundred yards of leaf material.
It's a great process.
We get a few people coming in now for more, so.
And then, anything you guys can do in the form of the E-Ways, you know, figure out if we have any, you know, outside offenders.
Oh, yeah. We try to, you know, you're supposed to make an appointment to come in. A lot of people are used to coming in for the E-Ways, so they just come in. And the problem always is, the first person that drops it will, or has, if we don't get it cleaned up right away, it does turn things, I just have to remind you, it is E-Waste, it's only something with a plug and it is called making appointments, so we can come in. It's easier to monitor that way. It's a great program now. You guys are the only ones that do it, so that's why I mean, we got to keep an eye on it.
And you did your fall planting?
Yes, we did. We planted, we did pine root school, we have four trees and we did fourteen trees.
Thank you.
The forest keys memorial went down, sorry I didn't mention that. That was very well attended. I know Denise Root, you all know you guys are all, did a lot of that, because there's a lot of people there for that, which is very, very nice for the family.
We did, we had about two hundred and fifty people at least, and the family did great, a beautiful time to come into the township. And they thanked, they thanked the township and they thanked Public Works and the staff. And they, they were very, very touched by the gesture.
Very nice.
Chris will like.
No more moving the rocks.
No, that's. And just said, thanks, Commissioner. More, you know. Obviously, you had the best committee, so. Fight that out next year, we'll see how it goes.
Nobody can even argue, so just don't put it up. Any questions for Mr. Warner?
I'm sorry, I got a complaint.
Sure.
From a township member. You employed NHS, not for, but you used NHS to clean up the weeds at.
But the NHS, Sandy O'Slan, I think is the head of it, she contacts me every year and they, you know, we, we supply bags, I'd say, buy her bags. And they'll usually clean up the trail in the alley center park. And this year I did get a resident that saw him and said, you know, it's probably better to leave that material there. It's nothing, the township's never been involved in it before. It was something she had always reached out to us to do, so I did talk to the resident about it. We can work it out with Sandy in the future.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, any more questions from Mr. Warner from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay, we'll accept the Public Works Department report as submitted. Under item X is my liaison report. Liaison to the township authority and the Billings Code Board of Appeals neither, which I've met, and that concludes my agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you to Commissioner Lohr, Chair of the Public Property Committee.
This, actually, last week, the Historic Architecture Review Board met and they, they had saw a application for a tenant owner. He is trying to put in a metro market where Billings Electric Supply was and Huntington Pike down by, I'm sorry. I'm a little tired. Huntington Pike, down by the. And basically, the attitude of the hard board is that this is neither a stone building nor a unique concern of theirs, that's how they come to the board. So they gave their approval contingent on, there are some zoning considerations. They have, they are asking for some additional signage and additional coverage of the windows. As far as the hardware concerns, they refined the existing sign, you know, whatever, the, the design on the signage, sorry. And then the other thing is Brown Expediting Services up in Salem wants to put two freestanding signs that there's professionals that again, is at the corner of Huntington Pike and Philmont. It's the one with the big clock. And what happened is that there's an Abington property there and Abington Memorial Healthcare property that is now being renamed Jefferson Health. So they want to redo the sign, basically the same, just add some blue lettering and change some of the names. And then we also, another applicant wants to change some colors in their lettering on the same sign. The sign is in poor condition and this will bring it back to looking nice again. Does anyone have any questions on those two items?
Yes. One, amen. I can't wait till they come in. I'm very excited about this and he's a really nice guy. With records, I like the top where it's, you know, honor green, the A and N.
It's a sign.
The sign, the freestanding one. Is that going, is that going to be that bright green or is it going to be one of the honor green? And they approved it to be that bright green?
Yeah, we had, the Wellharbor Board had no particular objection to that.
Okay, because it matches the veggies, I think, okay.
Yeah, I mean, they get these signs essentially prepared from pizza mason.
Okay.
So including the picturing on the windows, decals on the windows.
And because I guess they said that this is really just building, it's not.
It's not a historic.
Of historic.
Merit.
Okay, great.
I mean, and it, it looks so awful now, we're all looking forward.
Forward to it looking better.
To looking better and a bit of a little bit. I mean, they, they want the decals on the outside, they say, for security purposes. Their checked out people won't be seen from the outside, right, from the right.
That's interesting, interesting concept.
Yeah. So I had not considered that before, so, but they will need a approval from the zoning hearing board in order to do those things, so that's their next step.
Alright.
So given, does anybody else have any other questions?
No, it's good information, thanks.
Does anybody have any online, any questions? Okay, then I would recommend the issuance of a certificate of appropriateness for items twenty-one oh four and twenty-one oh five. I make the motion.
Second, second.
Okay.
Should we do it separately? Or?
You're, if you're recommending both of them, I'd recommend it.
Okay, so motion and second to approve as described, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Next is my liaison. For the Historic Architecture Review, where I have the Public Property Committee right now. For the Historic Architecture Review Board, we're, we're starting a project or unless someone has any serious objections, then it will be completely revenue retro to the township. We'd like to create plaques for our historic buildings and eventually it will be a walk-in with, we'll do the research and you can get the plaques made for free. I made those arrangements, so there's no cost to the township at all. And just, you know, once you're approval in kind, to see if you have any questions or problems with the idea of our doing it. What we will do is we will ask folks whose properties are already listed on our historic list if they are willing to allow us to do this research and see if they'd like to participate. If they do, then we go ahead and do the research and include, include them in our project. It will probably take a while to do all the properties listed. We're going to start with obviously the historic area. But my goal is to show off our township or the historic gem of the earth. When I was up in Far Harbor, Maine, a couple summers ago, they had plaques on a lot of their buildings with the date that it was built. That's the research that we need to do. And if anyone of interest would care. You know, I would not be considered somewhat of interest. You know, General George Washington, who, he slept there.
You are something.
But anyways, and we'd like to, to do all this unless someone has any objections. Any questions? I'd like to, right now, we have a meeting of four. I think over time, we'll try to increase the size, it's a subcommittee of four, and we'll try to increase that size as time goes on to help include folks in our community who really want to work with our government and to practice.
One annoying question that just, but just maybe so that everybody's on the same page today. These plaques, from a zoning perspective, are not signs, so I guess, is that a reasonable?
Well, if they're signs, they might be exempt under the zoning code.
Okay.
I mean, that's.
There is an exemption clause.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't creating, say, an unexpected hardship for a business that wanted to add a sign.
Usually, you know, those, those plaques, they're usually exempt, right? There's a whole list in the zoning code, but I would confirm that just to make sure.
The hardware is very excited about this. And they're going to be coming through with a request to include additional properties in the historic area. Talk about that going forward. And that completes my liaison report.
Thank you, Commissioner. The Chair now recognizes Commissioner Oberg, Chair of the Board and Committee.
Thank you. My first item is review and consider zoning hearing board appointment. At the October twenty twenty-one meeting, Andrew Hoffman advised the board the term of zoning hearing board member Merrill Torsky was set to expire on January third, twenty twenty-two. Bob Shaddy confirmed Ms. Torsky's interest to continue serving in this capacity and a resolution is attached, which would reappoint her to a new three-year, three-year term. Any questions from the board? Questions from the public? I would make a motion to approve the attached resolution number twenty-one dash thirty-nine. Reappointing Merrill Torsky to a three-year term on the zoning hearing board commencing on January fourth, twenty twenty-two and ending on January third, twenty twenty-five.
There's a motion and second to approve resolution number twenty-one dash thirty-nine as described, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
My second item is review zoning hearing board agenda and decisions. There is one application scheduled for the December sixteenth zoning hearing board meeting. I believe that's still honored up in.
That's on.
That's on, okay. The application is the continuation of the Shabbat Israeli Center for the location at twenty-seven fifty-five. The application is the continuation of the Shabbat Israeli Center for the location at twenty-seven fifty-five Philmon Avenue, Unit one hundred. They're seeking two variances related to signage. And there is one decision to report from the prior month's hearing. Application number twenty-one dash nineteen from Lev and Julia Pavlatsky of twenty-five eighteen Morgan Run. They were granted a variance to allow construction of a partially covered deck within the rear backyard setback. And the zoning hearing board added one condition to require the Egress windows to remain open. Lastly, my liaison.
I have a question, sorry. For the, for, for Bob, for does the township have a position for the, the appeal that's going on, or just let things play out?
I think we'll just let this one under the circumstances.
Thank you.
Sure. Finally, my liaison report. I am the zoning hearing board liaison. I did not have the opportunity to attend the meeting yet, but I'm looking forward to stopping by on the sixteenth.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Oder. That completes our agenda items. Now, I want to open up the public participation on any non-agenda items.
Can I ask a question? Have we ever considered I don't know, term limits and term, but for these committees, some of these not that disliked or anything, but some of these people have been on for a very long time. And I think it would be nice to rotate around the township a little bit more. Have we ever considered limiting people to, let's say, five terms, four terms? Or just do something?
So my opinion is that we have not, and a lot of times we've had trouble getting volunteers to fill some of these committees. And the ones that happen serve, do have sort of institutional wealth and knowledge that they contributed. And occasionally they will step down. It always allows an opportunity for new members to join. And Chris, you want to say further on that?
I would have nothing to add to that.
Okay. You know, it's not a personal thing for anybody. It just, you know, I hate to put this this way, but I'm gonna put it straight out there. A lot of people seem to be dying in the community posts, while they're still living in the community posts. And of course, some of that can be helped, and some of it is age-related. They recognize their poor health, but they continue accepting additional years, and I just think it's counterproductive for the township as a whole.
Yeah, well, the, the board always has the opportunity to not approve somebody when it comes before us to vote. So it's always an opportunity to vote nowhere to, or to propose somebody else. And perhaps a recommendation would be that if we know of somebody who is interested, they can and should submit to me a letter of interest and a resume now, so that we have those available for the point that these vacancies do not do. Oftentimes, in, in, for many of these seats, we do not have that.
Would it be appropriate to put in the township newsletter what positions are open?
The board would like to do that. I don't know if there's technically anything open. There's, we can advertise, you know, what is out there, and what the, what the position is, what the responsibilities are. And to submit name, submit their name if they're interested, but technically there's nothing open other than the few vacancies we have made on some of the double ones, so. I mean, the planning commission, I think, still needs one, so the other committees, I think, we, we just approved a couple things today, so those are
That's a pretty well-staffed.
Yeah, but, but
But I think it would be a good idea to get a stable presence and if we do that, I think that would be helpful.
And the liaisons on, for the different committees, you know, someone's trouble to spend your time, to put your two cents in, in their position, I'm sorry.
I don't know if I could do that, but yes, I will.
Any other comments before we just, Laura's handles first.
Just building on what I was just saying, thanks, Ruth, for bringing that up. I, I, I believe that most people in the township don't know when potential slots are opening up. Tonight, we renewed, what, three, four people to remain in their spots. And I heard Commissioner Serkin make notice that, oh, you know, well, they might be very qualified. And there may be more qualified people in the township who could do just as good of a job if given the opportunity or having a clue that there is a, a possibility. So it just ends up feeling very much like cronyism when we keep people and when we just kind of talk to our friends about, you know, do you, do you know anybody who might want to fill this commissioners or commission seat or board seat? You know, I, I think that there'd be a lot of people who have no idea that we don't have time limits on any of our seats. And, I mean, I'm a believer that all over the country, we should be limiting the amount of time that people sit in seats, but I think that we, it would also be an opportunity to get people more involved in the township. It's always one of the weaknesses here in Lower Moreland is, you know, again, the comment, well, people don't volunteer. But they're not informed either. It sounds to me like commissioners and people sitting on boards just ask their friends and neighbors if they know somebody who can fill a spot, rather than the township taking an active role in finding people who may be interested, even if it's a year out. Anyway, I just want to thank Ruth for bringing that up and would ask the board to consider looking at term limits and advertisements of potential open spots as they come up on the various boards around the township. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, but just a correct one in accuracy. We, we did appoint a civil service commission, and that was a brand-new appointment, not a real
Great.
Good for Joe Pace.
Joe?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, I, first of all, I just wanted to, Joe Pace, four-two-six Pepper Road. Most you know, January, I'm gonna be taking over Commissioner for Ward Two. I just wanted to thank Jill for her service. She did some really good things for the community, and I think it should be noticed, and I just want to thank you, Jill.
Thank you, Joe. Jaco, Steve?
That will happen. I told you it will happen. I, I've been a little, I've been a little busy.
All right.
But I'm looking forward to working with everybody and I wanted to, I don't want to take too much time. I just want to say thank you, and I do appreciate what you did.
Thanks, Joe.
Any other public comment before we adjourn? Then, hearing now, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
There's a motion on second to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Congratulations. How's it feel?